Is approval of meeting minutes, June 5th, 2019, regular session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
June 5th, 2019, executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item is to review and vote to approve the warrants for the period covering June 6th, 2019 through June 26th, 2019.
I make a motion to approve warrants for the period covering June 6th, 2019 to June 26th, 2019. Town payable warrants FY 2019 dash 5-0 and 5-51. And 2019 SP dash 1. Town payroll warrants FY 2019 dash 25. Sewer FY 2019 dash SE 26. Municipal light plants number 32, 33, and 34. And the school warrants FY 2019 dash S19.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Next item is Catherine Canny, Public Agency Retirement Services. Consider voting to have PARZ be the investment firm for our OPEB funds. Come up and...
As you may recall, in May, we began to fund our OPEB fund. And now that we are funding our trust fund, we need to select an investment company to manage those funds for us. And we need to get those funds invested by June 30th of 2019. At the recommendation of Todd Hassett, who's our financial consultant and has been with us since 2003, he recommended PARZ, which is the Public Agency Retirement Services. We met with Catherine and she told us all about the firm and what they could offer for the town. We sat down, it was myself, treasurer-collector, the town accountant, and we also had Mr. Crowley join us. And she's here tonight to tell us what else we need to do in order to get everything invested in a timely fashion.
So before we do that, we met, I was very impressed with what was said. We have to actually set up a trust. The legal expenses on setting up that trust would be substantial. The, and I have the book in my car, I didn't bring it up, correct me if I'm wrong, it's 25 basis points is the trust fee?
Yes.
So...
So there are three fees that are combined.
If you can...
So let me just, I can go a quick background on how the program works.
Okay.
My name's Kate Canny, and I am a member of the team for Public Agency Retirement Services, we call ourselves PARZ. And we assist public agencies with addressing the costs and funding for retirement services. And one of the things we do is we manage OPEB trusts. We have developed what's called a multiple employer agency trust. And that is an established trust with a custodian, trustee, an investment management program, and all the legal trust documents that need to be put in place, including an IRS private letter ruling that covers the trust. We've established that, and then it allows for individual agencies to join. There's the benefit of there's no upfront work that needs to be done by the town or joining members. We manage all the legal and compliance of the trust ongoing, so if there are any changes on the state or federal level for trust management, we take care of that. We've established investment pools that are, the funds are pooled together, so you can reach a more diversified level, which allows you to meet your goals. And we work with Vanguard Investment Management, that's who manages our pools. We've put this program together because it's an economies of scale, agencies join. But I have to make one statement, is that your assets are not co-mingled. They're invested together as a pool, but that your assets are held separately in its own account. So your earnings are your earnings, and there's no cross-sharing of liabilities. So that is something that people always want to kind of ask, and I'd like to confirm that your assets are your assets. So by pooling the assets together, we're able to achieve higher investment returns at a lower cost. So the cost of the program, all in, is there is a management administration fee of 25 basis points. Just for anybody at home who doesn't appreciate what a basis point is, one basis point is 1% of 1%. So that's the standard. The Vanguard fees are currently four basis points, and the custodian fee with US Bank is five basis points. A key feature of our program is our investment pools are pooled together. So as the balance of the investment portfolio grows, we have over $250 million in this one portfolio currently, the investment fees go down. So to put that into perspective, when we launched the Vanguard portfolio in January of 2015, the basis points were seven basis points for fees. Because we've achieved over 250 and we have benchmarks, the investment fees are now right below four basis points. So each month with the portfolio growing in asset earnings and in agencies joining, which is actually in nine states throughout the nation, those fees go down. So that's sort of the process that way. And then you'll have the option of, you'll select one of the four portfolios. We have a growth portfolio, a balanced portfolio, conservative, and fixed income. And those are based on asset allocations of equity versus fixed income.
So I was at the meeting. What she just said with those basis points equates to $380 per $100,000 of assets under management per year. We would have tried to do this ourselves, it's going to cost us a lot more than that. I highly recommend that we hire PARZ, go with the Vanguard fund, and go with the balanced investment approach. And everybody at the meeting, from the finance team that was there, was on board and had the same opinion as far as the investment approach as well.
I'm just, so you manage the fund?
Yeah, so we, PARZ manages the trust itself, and the investment management is conducted by our portfolio manager, Brian Brinkley at Vanguard. So he is the portfolio manager. We have a dedicated portfolio manager. We administer the whole program.
So in the future, who's going to tell us what funds to be in? I don't think this board are, who's going to make the recommendations of, did they have somebody that says?
Yes.
We should move the funds, or we should...
So I am your, I will be your point of contact as your client services individual. Should you ever have a question of any kind about the investment management portion, the Vanguard program, we would be putting together either a phone meeting or an in-person meeting with the portfolio manager, who is Brian Brinkley. So if you at any time wanted to change the, from balanced to growth, or balanced to conservative, Mr. Brinkley would talk to you about that, that choice, and does it fit the needs of West Boylston and your goals?
And I guess the question is, who makes that call? It's not this board. I mean, does the finance...
Under state law, it's the treasurer.
Yeah, okay, so that's, they decide where it goes with discussion with your person. Yeah.
But we only have four options. It's not like we can say, pick this fund, pick this one.
I know, but this, I just, I don't think the board should be involved in that, because that's our purview to do it in. That's fine.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Oh, goodie. Yes, I do.
Sorry.
Whereas the town of West Boylston, the town has accepted the provisions of Chapter 32b, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Law as amended by Chapter 218, Section 15 of the Acts of 2016. And whereas it is determined to be the best interest of the town to participate in the PARZ Public Agency Post Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust, the OPEB Fund, O-P-E-B Fund, to fund post-employment benefits for the employees as specified in the town's policies and our applicable collective bargaining agreements hand. Whereas the OPEB Fund is a tax-exempt trust and plan performing and essential governmental functions within the meaning of Section 115 of the Internal Revenue Code, as amended, and the regulations issued thereunder, and is a tax-exempt trust under the relevant statutory provisions of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And whereas the assets of the OPEB Fund shall be invested in accordance with the prudent investment rules under the provisions of Chapter 203c of the Massachusetts General Law. And whereas the town adoption and operation of the OPEB Fund has no effect on any current or former employee's entitlement to post-employment benefits. And whereas the terms and conditions of the post-employment benefit entitlement, if any, are separate from and independent of the OPEB Fund. And whereas the town's fund of OPEB Fund, funding of OPEB Fund, does not and is not intended to create any new vested right to any benefit, nor strengthen any existing vested right. And whereas the town reserves the right to make contributions, if any, to OPEB funds. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectment of the Town of West Boylston, the Board hereby adopts the Public Agency Post Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust, including the public agency's post-retirement healthcare plan effective June 26th, 2019. And the Board hereby appoints the treasurer or his or her successor or his or her designee as the town plan administrator of the OPEB Fund. And further authorize the investment of the OPEB Fund under the prudent investment rule established under Chapter 203c of the Massachusetts General Law. And the town's planned administrators hereby authorized to execute the PARZ legal investment and administrative documents on behalf of the town, and to take whatever additional actions are necessary to maintain the town's participation in the OPEB Fund, and to maintain compliance of any relevant regulations issued or as may be issued. Therefore authorizing him or to take whatever additional actions are required to administer the town's OPEB Fund.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Did everybody get that? Can you repeat?
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
So in regards to, what do we have now currently in the fund? Now we put money into, we put...
$100,000 is available to be put into the fund. It was, it was allocated...
So it's ready to go in?
Yes.
So you're saying it's, the fee is currently three-something for a thousand?
Point 3.8% per, .38% is the fee, which is $380 per $100,000.
For $100,000.
Right, is that, is .38 total?
Okay.
You don't have to sign, you don't have to sign it, you know what I'm saying? This is the only document you need signed?
From you, yes.
Okay. She wants that now, right?
I'm going to have the town clerk certify it.
Plenty of time to spare.
That's great.
Three days.
It's not tax-erfered, it's taxless, huh?
Say again?
It's not tax-erfered, it's taxless. I was studying it, I made sure you didn't miss anything.
You did well.
Did a good job.
Needs two more bottles of water.
No pitches.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the West Boylston Water District Commissioners' request to obtain an easement for conveyance of the land in the vicinity of the Oakdale Well.
Good evening.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board.
My name is Stan Zarco. I am the chairman for the Water District. And along with me are Board members Robert Brinkelson and Gary Flynn, in addition to our superintendent, Michael Culveney, and our consultant, Michael All from CEI. You, I'm opening up this discussion with the Board for the purpose of introducing the issue at hand, which is an ACO, Administrative Consent Order, that the district has received from the Department of Environmental Protection. The rationale behind the ACO was to have us construct a water treatment facility to handle and to treat the manganese, the excessive concentration of manganese out of the Oakdale Well. Also, the Oakdale Well is probably our largest supplier of water in town. And its yield is in a vicinity, or approved yield is in the vicinity of 1 million gallons a day. So it's a very important well for all of our residents. Matter of fact, about 98% of the entire town is serviced by all our wells. But as the issue for location has arrived, the, we're still in the, should say, the piloting stage, you know, with the, I don't know if you've noticed, there is a pilot program ongoing right now at the well. And our consultant can elate a little bit more, elaborate a little bit more on that a little further on. But our main purpose is to see if we can acquire the necessary land that'll be required to construct this facility and the appurtenances that go along with it. So our, I guess they are meeting here today is to try to discuss with you if there is an opportunity that the town would be willing to talk with us and to possibly provide the necessary land area that will, that we can construct the facility upon. The location that we found is fairly close, not exactly as that picture dictates, but it was just drawn in to give some reference to where our well is located and the area that's closest to the, or approximate to the well itself. And as far as size, we don't have definite area, or I should say, definite areas available yet at this particular point, because the construction, or I should say even the design of the facility hasn't been determined yet. So what our, again, what our purpose here is to open up a dialogue with the town to see if there are some possibilities that the district can work with the town for a parcel up near that rail trail and near our well, so that we might be able to work in the future to acquire or grant or get an easement for the necessary land that's going to be, that's going to be necessary. If there are questions that the board might have would be, I think we've got enough support over here to, and the knowledge to answer any, any particular questions that you may have.
My main question is, it says in the vicinity of the rail trail. Where's the rail trail on this map?
Fire training.
That's where the gate is.
Okay, so this is the, this is being, the rail trail goes that way? Got it, okay. So it's not going to obstruct any use of the rail trail or have any DCR issues? They've been, they're next?
There's always DCR.
You're always going to have one.
I don't, well, I think DCR has indicated that we should come to the town first, simply because of the issues that they're reluctant to give up anything that they have.
No, I just mean the DCR issues with putting a structure there when it's the vicinity of the water, the reservoir.
No, well, being a water treatment facility, DCR, you know, is basically in the same position that DEP is, you know, for even ourselves, you know, we're basically a family of various units. And the purpose is to protect the water supply and also to provide, you know, sufficient potable and clean water to the residents. And, you know, indicating that, you know, the majority of the town, I'd say almost 100% of the town is already on our water supply for potable usage and other uses. But, you know, so that interaction between or amongst the agencies is for one purpose alone, and that's to, you know, keep our water supplies pure, clean, and...
We tried to build something that wasn't a water treatment plant there, they would say no.
Well, we've, we've had some issues also with our Pleasant Valley Well, and we're still moving slowly along for that, in that area. So with DCR being, you know, the, holding the stick as far as what needs to be done and how long it takes before we can actually get the final approval. But that's coming along after a little over a year of, you know, work with, you know, representatives and so forth. But anyway, that's, that's another issue that, that will help us further. So if you have any other questions, you know, we'd be glad to...
So you're looking for about an acre of land out of the, is that total?
Yeah, that is, but I think Mike All from CEI, who's, you know, doing the engineering on the pilot right now, I think he'd be more apt to give you a little more, you know, reasonable answers to that question. Michael?
Yeah, can everybody hear, speak from here? The, for a facility of this nature, and given the size, the capacity of the facility, which is based on maintaining the capacity of the well, as treated water, we're looking at a building that's roughly 50 by 100, at most, like a 40 by 80 square footage. And then the acre parcel is more or less what you end up with when you deal with leaving space around the building for just access and other things like having an emergency generator, emergency power and such. So it's shown there is, you know, somewhat rectangular, almost close to a square. That is all being considered as part of a conceptual design, which we'll be starting this summer. The overall plan is the pilot study, which was determining or confirming which treatment technologies would actually be effective or most effective in dealing with this, is just wrapping up. We'll be looking at the results over the summer and then coming up with some essentially conceptual facility layouts and associated conceptual site layouts. So it may be that we can stretch it out a little longer and narrower to keep it maybe a little further and not as visible from the rail trail, things like that.
Well, how far you are with the new well?
How far are we with the new well? So we're waiting on DCR to grant us the easement. And we're ready to sink it as soon as, as soon as that paperwork gets filed with the Registry of Deeds.
You think, how much time it might take?
It's hard to tell.
It's been for a long time, right?
It's been a long time, you know, and every, seems like every turn they throw a new
So even if you get that, even if the new well is functioning, do we need the Oakdale Well?
Yes.
So it won't supply that much water?
It would, we're always going to need a backup well, you know, to the Pleasant Valley Well. Pleasant Valley Well is on the low system, and along with the Oakdale Well, Lee Street Well is on the high system, so...
You know, the reason I'm asking is, you know, Lee Street Well, as well as this well, may not have that kind of an magnesium.
Magnesium, yeah.
So this is a problem, right? Magnesium?
It's magnesium.
Magnesium.
Magnesium, yes.
Magnesium, yeah.
It's a definite issue. It's been an issue for many years now with the Oakdale Well and the Pleasant Valley.
So with the treatment, you will be completely eliminating all the magnesium?
Correct. We would filter out the magnesium, yes.
For use, Mr. Chairman. Now the magnesium, do you have to remove that? Is that going to be something that's constantly being removed from the property?
Yes.
It is, okay. Is there, how far off from the river are you actually, the corner of the building? Approximately?
From the well, or from, from the...
From the new perspective?
From the new, from the new area? I'm going to say 600 feet.
Oh, 600 feet, okay, okay.
Beyond the 400 foot.
Yeah.
Do they have any issues with the guys moving that around waterways or anything? Is there anything with magnesium?
It's a 400-foot, oh, no.
No, moving, removing it, is there any issues they have with you? How do you, is it a, considered, like, what type of waste is it considered?
It's, it's, will show up as a blackish-brown...
No, I know, but I mean, yeah, when you transport it, what do they consider it?
It is very benign. So there's really no special descriptions in disposing of it.
Oh, good, that's all this thing is about.
Where do you plan to dispose?
Pardon?
Where do you plan to dispose?
The sewer.
There's different options at this point that'll be considered. If it's possible, it may be discharged into the sewer system and then treated through that process. It could also be dealt with when facilities either don't have that option or sewer system doesn't have the capacity. It can be put into essentially a settling basin on site, which is really just an open, like a detention basin with a liner. And the overflow from that, which, because this material settles out very well, will overflow into essentially a leaching or infiltration basin. And knowing the area, the materials would be very conducive to just infiltrating the clean or decanted water back into the ground, which would be an option. And then periodically, you take these basins offline and literally just let them, kind of, it'll go through a freeze thaw period, which helps to solidify and de-water it. And there are companies that actually will come in and remove it and blend it into fertilizer products that they will then sell on the market.
Where, where exactly is it to the rail trail? Is it right at the gate?
It's between the gate and the...
Train?
Container, box containers that are for the fire.
The fire training.
It's inside the area.
It's inside the fence.
So when you enter there to the right, it's, it's a hill like this?
Yes, which if I can point out that, these are the contour lines for earlier referencing.
Is that where you're going to put it, or on the top of that?
Nope, tucked into the base of it. Pushed up to the base of it, is the thaw.
Doesn't seem like there's a lot of space there to...
We're not sure exactly. This was just laid in so that we'd have something to look at, you know, and to bring. But it can be adjusted.
Yeah, because I mean, when you enter through the gate to your right, there's not a lot of land before you hit that.
Correct. And, and as I said, when Mike drew this up, it was just to get something on paper so that we'd have an idea, you know, where it might be a good location, or a location.
So approximately 500 to 600 feet in past the green gate is where that rectangle is drawn on the map. But before the, before the... Before the, before the fire training cars. Yeah.
But bear in mind, that's not necessarily the location where it will ultimately, you know, we still have to wait until the pilot study has been completed and, and the engineering drawings, construction drawings can be identified to see what size plant we need, and what area it's going to take to, you know, to build it.
So as of right now, do you have any other options if this is a no?
Well, DCR will let us use the parking lot, which, you know where that's going to go. I don't think so.
The grass, the grass area there that we used to field on.
That's it. It'd have to be away from the water, because we're too, you know, we're fairly close with the well as it is right now. So any other location would move it further back and we're up near the, up basically on the parking area for the rail trail.
Between the parking lot and there's a big grass area, we used to have a field there years ago. Directly behind the well, is what you're talking about.
The tennis courts are, is there any...
That's on DCR property.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've approached DCR already, and they said you'd be better off asking the town first. Shocker.
They don't want, they basically don't want to give anything up that's already been developed for their own purposes. And I guess the parking area was one of the big one. When they removed it from the basin itself, closer to the basin, if you recall, right along the quintipoxit there, just to the left of the well as you're looking at the well, that area right down the basin was all opened up for parking. They closed that off, and then they... left of the well as you're looking at the well, that area right down the basin was all opened up for parking. They closed that off and then they moved it up on the hill, or should say up on the old basketball courts and places up there. So.
So they're asking you to come to the town first. If we say.
No.
This no, or this location, did they ask you to go back to them and say, okay, the town doesn't think this is the best plan? They said ask the town so they can say yes.
It's the one that, uh, apparently has the area that's still somewhat undeveloped and, you know, possibly could be used a little more efficiently than what apparently they have. That's already been earmarked for usage right now.
How, how high will this building be?
Any idea on that, Mike?
I mean, you said it.
Two stories or?
It is, won't be two stories, but it will be the height roughly of two stories. The wall height on these facilities tends to be at a maximum of like sixteen or eight feet, eighteen feet tall. And we'd probably be putting some type of sloped or pitch groove on it just because of the region we're in for snow.
Now, this is a biological filtration system that we're looking at, if I'm not mistaken, correct? And.
That is one of the options.
That's one of the options. And they just recently completed one in Shoes, in the town of Shoesbury, uh, which apparently has had tremendous success, you know, in removing their manganese. So, uh, that's why we're doing a, uh, both manganese, uh, filtration on this biological treatment system. In addition, they already did a green sand filter. So there were two treatment processes that have undergone, are, one is still undergoing, uh, the, uh, piloting and the other one, the green sand filter has been completed, correct? Or has it?
Yes.
It has been.
If it, if it was to go into our sewer system, I'd be concerned. I don't know, would a sewer system be able to handle the extra?
That would have to be studied and, you know, would have to determine that through your sewer.
At a million gallons a day, it's a solid. What are we talking about? Are we talking about an ounce, a pound, ten pounds? But what comes out of a million gallons of water and you remove the manganese? What, what, how much, it's going to be a solid. How big is it going to be? How much stuff will be talking?
I would say over the course of a year treating that million gallons per day, uh, if you, when you settle it out and de-water it, you're probably talking about an inch of solids over this room area.
So it's not a tremendous.
Well, but that, then that gets put into the sewer system.
That's an option.
It's an option.
Right, yeah. It has to get flushed through with water, right?
Right, right.
So it's, it's just that, it's just that, but it has to be flushed through the sewer system somehow through with water, right?
If we were doing the discharge directly to the sewer, we probably would not be doing a de-watering process. We would end up with some type of holding basin with the entire backwash volume, which is a much more dilute, uh, solution. And then just discharge that at some type of measured or metered slower rate so it doesn't overload the sewer. We've done that recently for the Auburn Water District and they ultimately discharged to, the easiest solution for them was to discharge to the town sewer system. And ultimately it goes to the upper blackstone planet. Uh, and, uh, that, because of that, you don't have any lagoons outside the building. So the treat, the footprint potentially could shrink. Instead of one acre, we could add a little and maybe end up with half an acre.
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Chairman. Is this, um, like, so if you're discharging a slurry, uh, is this an abrasive? Like, would this affect? It's not at all, there's no abrasive qualities?
It's fluffy.
Fluffy, okay.
Yeah. Even if it were settling out in a glass, a water bottle, uh, just a quick shake and it just really.
Yeah, so when they have effects on a bum star or anything like that.
And it's, it is an acceptable waste, you know, for the sewer system. So it's not, you know, a contaminant that's hazardous or creates nuisance, uh, properties, so.
Right now. I mean, so you said that things change all the time. So right now that, that's the case, but we don't know. So when you do this study, you're going to look into cost, there might be cost to the town for the sewer? I, I don't know. Yeah, everything will be looked at. And so what do they, what are you asking for tonight?
Discussion. Basically, we're looking to see if the board, you know, on behalf of the town, would be amiable to, uh, you know, considering, uh, you know, an easement or whatever methods, uh, might determine to be suitable for the town and for us, you know, to locate the treatment facility on somewhere on that parcel that the town has, owns. I mean, there's going to be more discussions because we, at this point, this, you know, a general opening up of the, uh, talks. The, we don't have the final information from the pilot study, but we at least, uh, you know, want to let DEP know that we are in the process of discussions and, uh, you know, they want us to meet certain, uh, target dates on the various phases of the construction process for the treatment facility. And, and this is one of them, to find a piece of property that'll work with, uh, the, uh, you know, the final plans when they're, uh, you know, when they determine.
So are you looking for a, a, a vote of this board to say, yes, we, we'd be willing to potentially, I mean, or just a, a, okay, this is something that needs to be done. We're not giving you a hard no. Come back to us with a more developed plan. What is it that the DEPs look for?
Well, if you're interested in, in taking a vote and allowing us, you know, to go further or to at least have your consideration for the parcel on that.
Is that what the DEP, is that what the DEP is looking for?
Oh, they want us to have.
They want it built yesterday, sure.
Oh, yeah, definitely, definitely. But, uh, you know, they'll, again, you know, the timetable that they've set for us puts us in some constraints because, you know, we, we have to try to meet them accordingly. And this is our first step in looking for a piece of land that'll accommodate.
Is, is this issue something that the water has more manganese or the allowable amounts have gone down? Twenty-five years ago, it was the same, but it was not a problem. And now the allowable amounts of manganese per parts per million is, is different. So now it is a problem. What's the?
Well, it has been, the secondary contaminant level of point oh three, point oh five.
Point oh five.
Point oh five milligrams per liter. And, you know, the well has been, and I'll let Mike, uh, he's on this on a daily basis.
Back in, I think it was twenty sixteen, the DEP set a, a health standard for manganese at point three, um, for potential neurological effects for exposure, drinking water with manganese in it. Um, we are, we've been, uh, pumping the Oakdale well, in the summer especially. It's well up over one. So we're over the, the health limit for manganese.
But prior to twenty sixteen, what was the limit?
There was no limit, um, on the health part of it. Um, so they, that's a new, um, rule as of then.
So water hasn't changed. The rules have changed.
Correct.
I just want the public to know that, that nothing is, this isn't something all of a sudden water got contaminated.
And, and not, not to mention that the, the manganese does cause a lot of aesthetic issues with the staining, dirty water, you know, things. The Oakdale, uh, section of town has been, uh, bothered by this for many, many years.
Free, what is the neurological, uh, things that they're worried about?
Any, uh, mostly for infants. There's a limit as to how much manganese that can be in the diet. Uh, manganese is an essential nutrient for the body. But if there's too much manganese, it can cause neurological, uh, possibly neurological defects. There's no clear, um, arguments on both sides on this, but DEP has set this limit.
Have you, Mike, have you guys gone all the way in and looked to the right where that old Hotwell Street Bridge is? Did you walk way in the corner there, walking towards the rail trail? How far did you guys go in? Because we got a spot that goes way in there, you know, way around the corner. The closer you get to the very entrance of it, we used to keep our soccer nets and there's the old Hotwell Street Bridges back there and all kinds of stuff. There's a big area way back there that I think wouldn't affect as much as some of the other stuff up close. It's almost where your picture is, but I think it's just a little further up.
Okay.
It goes way in. We used to take care, we used to mow it and stuff, but.
So behind the, the rail fire training cars?
Yeah, as far as you can up to the right, you'll see some piles of stuff there. It goes way in.
That's a little further.
Yeah, it's a little further up. Is there, is it just pipes that basically are going to be the cost of the further out you put it? So it's not a big cost then? So I mean, because that would be way out of the way. That would be way up in the corner.
We'd be certainly open to, you know, something like that also. I just put that rectangle there.
No, I understand why, no, I understand why you do that. And you can't see, there's all sumac trees in there now anyway. It's all grown. But I know it went way in because like I said, there's a, the old Hotwell Street Bridge is in there and there's a bunch of other stuff in there.
It would be just a matter of running the, the piping and utilities.
That would be the only expense, right?
From the Oakdale well, you know, to the treatment facility. And as you can see in the picture, there, there's just a narrow strip that the, the town granted the district back in the fifties for the Oakdale well. That was originally part of, um, the rail trail property that was, uh, provided to the town through the Pan Am Railway.
So the town has been very, very, uh, you know, good to the district in the past. And, you know, we've got, I guess, a reasonable relationship with, uh, the town and the agencies right now. So as a result, I guess we're kind of hoping that the, uh, same, you know, same kind of features and, uh, good feeling, goodwill can continue.
Is this unique to West Boylston or is this happening in many towns because of the change?
It is happening, it is happening across the state, um, with the new level that DEP has set with the, with the manganese limit.
So this isn't just the, our well, few wells. This is many wells in the state.
Yes.
And because, again, what Mr. Hadley said, it's because the rules changed, not because anything happened in the water.
Correct.
Which are, there were a couple of communities that, uh, Mike was mentioning earlier today.
Well, Shoesbury is the closest, uh, community to us, um, that's had manganese issues over the years. And they were under also under, under an order from DEP to, to filter it out.
But if they have a treatment center already, those towns, they've been treating it.
Shoesbury had not prior to last year.
Right. But towns that do are able to treat it.
Correct.
Yeah.
There are new ones coming online as, as we, you know, speak now. Or should say they're in the same process as we are with orders to develop a treatment facility for that same manganese, exceedances in manganese also.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I think we have, we have to give them the option to even look at it. I mean, it's, it's, all the town, just because you have a water district, where the board is selecting. We have to fix the issue.
Right.
We, so what's the timeline if, today's done, you've met with us. What's the timeline to that treatment center being?
The conceptual design is scheduled to be complete by the end of this year. And as part of that, uh, a key part of that would be really working out kind of where is it going to go and what's the lay of the land so that we can at that point then, after the first of the year, start on detailed design. And, uh, our, the schedule that DEP has committed the district to has the construction documents, the complete design being completed by October of twenty twenty. So we've kind of got that through this year, maybe a little into next year, you know, really finalize plan.
So how long, is there any way to speed the process up? I, I mean, I hate to say it that way, but I mean, it seems like a long time to get the water being treated, get the manganese out of the water. Is there anything we can do to make it quicker or?
You're, you're talking like DEP is just, uh, on that same timetable. But, uh, in accordance with the construction and the timelines for the various phases, because we're also going to be applying for grant money, well, SRF funding, which is the state revolving fund for water facilities. Uh, and that takes, what about a year?
Yeah, they, the, the SRF program has a very fixed, uh, calendar year basis. And the next, uh, opportunity to kind of put a pre-app application in is August of this year, which is what the district intends to do.
Okay.
And so that starts the whole cycle and then you're essentially locked into that timeframe.
So at this point, um, I, I think we could give one more question?
Yeah, I was going to make a, I was going to make a motion.
Okay, I was going to call for a motion, so you go.
Make a motion for the board of selectmen to work with the water district to move forward with this plan. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So move.
Well, we thank you, gentlemen, very much. And I appreciate working with you and we'll look forward to it.
So just to, to, so the public knows and we know, when will be the next time you come and sit with us and tell us where you may be? Not till after the first or we have more information in the next five, six months? I don't know.
Probably won't be until we have a definitive design, you know, what type of a plant we're going to build and how much land we need.
And that's.
I would say it would be beneficial to meet sometime in October, November.
Yeah, just so we can get an update. And then obviously I would ask that you go to the town administrator. If there's issues and we find out the DCR has issues and we have to look at the next step, I would ask that we come, we come to us quicker so we know where it stands in the.
And this is something that obviously we're going to work with. We all live in this town and it's, it affects us as well, so.
Well, what we'll do is as we receive information from DEP and from our consultant, uh, we can relay that, you know, through the administrator to you so that you'll have an update as it occurs to keep you, you know, on board and well informed also.
And just, so the residents in town, are they seeing a different look of the water? Is there a smell of the water from this? Is there any of this? Is it because it's, because now the regulation says it's higher? Is it changing?
Nothing has, nothing has changed as to what you see.
Or smell.
Or, or smell or taste.
Okay.
I think, you know, you, you, I did talk to you last year. There are many residents. They complained about clogging their filters, the water being a brown color.
Yes.
From the Oakdale area. So yes, there is a problem, right?
Correct.
Even if they put the filters, you know, they, the filters clogs very quickly. So we do, we do have to do something. But the funding, uh, covers all the expense, uh, part of the expense. Uh, do we, do we anticipate any increasing in the water phase? That's one of the concerns town residents might have.
Yes, uh, obviously the, there'll be, um, a bill to pay through the, uh, to build the facility. We're going to apply for a loan through the state revolving fund. Um, as we're a small community, uh, I think we can get a seven percent, uh, grant right off the top of the loan, uh, being a community under ten thousand population. So, um, right now we're looking, you know, I'm going to say three to five million to build this plant. And, you know, water rates will have to be increased to, you know, pay for the twenty-year loan, our bond on the, on the plant.
Funding wise, how much you are expecting out of the three to five million?
As far as what?
Funding.
A grant.
So it'll, it'll, we'll be applying for the whole, whole amount through the SRF.
What's the realistic hope?
Sounds like seven percent.
Seven percent?
Seven percent would be the grant.
That's nothing, I guess. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, the presentation on the municipal vulnerability, uh, plan.
Hi, how's it going?
Hello. My name is Eli Goldman. I work with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Um, I have a PowerPoint that I had sent to Nancy. I also have, I have it on my own PC. I'm not sure.
Do you have a thumb drive?
I don't. I don't. I have it on email or I have it on a computer, but unfortunately I don't have it on a.
If you want to email it to me.
Yeah, I might go to, sorry for that, but I can not waste time and I can start talking as I do that.
When did you email it to me?
Um, I think when I sent the materials for the, the packet.
Oh, okay.
But as I. Awesome, thank you. So sorry for small delay. Um, but as a quick, uh, so just do this quickly.
Nancy, do you recall if you sent it up to us?
Actually it is. It's in your packet.
It's, it's a PDF in our package.
PDF in your packet.
No, I'm saying, did you email it to us at the point in the past?
No, I didn't see it.
Right.
All right, so hopefully that goes through. Um, but as a quick little background, um, so the purpose of tonight, we'd held a public listening session earlier this month to kind of run through findings from the MVP workshop. Um, but wanted to give another chance to give an opportunity to kind of talk about the findings and present it to you all. So we'll start by kind of a, a brief description of what the MVP program is. In a, in a large sense and kind of general sense, it's the state's response to climate change and providing funds to communities to build resilience, um, in the face of our changing climate. Um, and so the MVP program provides support for Massachusetts communities to begin the process of planning and implementing climate resilience. Um, the way the program works is there's really two phases, the first of which, um, you apply for a planning grant, which is what you all have been awarded and is well-funded the workshop. Um, and then coming out of the workshop, you receive a MVP designation as a community and that allows you to apply for action grants, um, later down the line, which, um, are developed kind of through the strategies and, um, it's kind of really the culmination of the workshop. And it's coming up with ideas that will then turn into action grants to implementable projects. Um, so here we go. I guess just clicking through to the, yeah, so this is what I'm kind of talking through right now. Um, this was the second round of planning grants that kind of just wrapped up. Um, 71 communities participated in the first round, another 82 are kind of at this same stage that you are. And where we have a, a near final report, uh, that will be submitted at the end of the month. And then at that point, we can move on to the, the second stage, is what I'm mentioning about the, the action grants, if you don't mind clicking to the next slide. Uh, so the main objectives of the MVP program, um, is to define extreme weather and natural climate-related hazards, um, to identify existing and future vulnerabilities and strengths. So it's not only looking at vulnerabilities, but it's looking at strengths in town and how to enhance as well. Um, develop and prioritize actions for the community and broader stakeholder networks. So that's really the purpose of the workshop, um, was to bring all sorts of folks in the room. Um, I think we ended up with close to 15 people who participated, um, for that day, so that was great. Um, and at, at the end of it, you're really hoping to identify opportunities for the community to advance actions to reduce risks and build resilience. So that's really, uh, the broad kind of brush of the four objectives of the MVP program. Um, a lot of, a major question that comes up a lot is kind of what's the difference between this and hazard mitigation plan? Um, there's definitely a lot of overlap, um, the two kind of feed off of each other. You have a hazard mitigation plan that was accepted by FEMA in 2018. And so where hazard mitigation plans are kind of backwards looking in some senses, MVP is really focused on charting a path forward. And so that's kind of the, the key difference is, and is a kind of simple, simplified way to think about the difference. The two inform each other. MVP is more focused on forward-thinking and, and building, building resilience. Um, so I've talked through this a little bit in mentioning the workshop. Um, but it really relied on a, a strong core team that, that was fielded by the town. So we met three times over the course of kind of the planning stage. Um, lots of folks were involved in that, um, from Chris to Nancy. Kind of, we tried to get a, a broad selection of people from town and different boards and commissions to, to feed into that process. CMRPC served as the MVP service provider. Um, so we facilitated the workshop, which was held on Bay 14th. Um, there, like I mentioned, there was a listening session held earlier in June and then this is kind of now a second opportunity to, to talk through some of the, the findings from, and results from the, from the workshop. So the way the workshop, um, was focused and, and, and worked, um, began by identifying, we talked about four major natural hazards impacting West Boylston, um, related to climate change. Um, as we were talking through and workshopping these, we ended up with these being the, the four main, um, being flooding, which included all types of flooding, from river flooding to flash flooding, flooded basements, things like dam failure. We talked about winter storms being kind of the most common and damaging hazard in the area in West Boylston and, and surrounding towns and Central Mass in general, kind of. Um, we talked about droughts and wildfire as another, um, top hazard. And then our last top hazard was just kind of a general category of severe storms, which can mean anything from kind of windstorms, tornadoes and that kind of, grouping of, of hazard events. Um, so then we looked at these four hazards through the three different lenses, um, those being infrastructure, society and environment. And so we split up into different smaller groups, um, during the workshop. And we had one table that focused on infrastructure, one focused on societal topics and one that focused on environmental topics. Then we had two tables that were tasked with looking at all three of those. And so here are some of the findings from the environmental section. Um, so the priority features that ended up coming, were kind of rising to the top through the workshop, um, being impassable roads during storms, culverts and drainage, wildfires and water quality kind of generally. Um, we talked about some strengths that exist in town, those being wooded areas, conservation land, wellhead protection, um, the reservoir, the rail trail. And then we kind of, in the later half of the day, developed strategies to either enhance some of those strengths or build resilience to kind of mitigate some of those, um, hazards that we talked about. So some of the strategies that we came up with for environmental topics were communicate throughout town with the radio system, um, complete an engineering study and assessment of existing drainage facilities, culverts, retention ponds, and identify required improvements. We talked about supplying the fire department with equipment to better control wildfires and focus on diversifying, um, tree species and also continued monitoring and testing of wells in town. Um, this is just a, we had a series of maps, um, that were kind of used to help workshop participants identify different things. This is one that was helpful for the environmental group, this is an example. And then kind of a similar thing for society, some of the priority features that emerged, um, emergency shelters, communication kind of generally, emergency response capability, senior housing, long-term and continued care facilities. Some of the strengths that this group talked about were municipal-owned utilities, food pantry and meals on wheels, faith-based, um, civil and social organizations and existing emergency shelters. Some of the strategies that were, and this societal topic kind of ends up encompassing a lot, but some of the strategies, um, that this group came up with, purchase generators, um, budget maintenance funds, so senior center, elementary school. And town hall can function as emergency, emergency shelters, excuse me, continue to increase and improve communications between emergency services and residents. Can you, continue to coordinate logistics for emergency response procedures with emergency services. And lastly, um, just kind of general coordination, um, with existing groups, um, those being MMAP, MMAP, um, other kind of emergency response groups to protect vulnerable populations. And again, a similar map. Um, there are a series of maps, like I said, that, that were useful that day. Um, then the last topic was infrastructure, to run through it in a similar way, priority features for this group. And there's a lot of overlap, as you'll see, um, West Boylston, emergency shelters, public safety equipment and facilities, Department of Public Works and senior center. Some of the strengths, um, municipal fuel tanks, existing evacuation routes, the municipal light plant, um, and tree and debris management. Um, and some of the strategies that this group developed and came up with, um, consisted of adding backup generators at the senior center, um, elementary school and town hall, making upgrades to the fire department facility, um, training firefighters to prepare and respond to wildfires, um, and add a communication center to the police department's facility, move the town's salt shed and construct a new DPW facility, um, ensure the, the shelter facility has access to a walk-in clinic or in-town medical facility and coordinate with the WRGA for access to the senior center. And again, a similar thing for the, the map. Um, so I think this should be included in, in your packets as well, but this was, this is kind of the, the final results of, of the workshop. Um, so when I was talking about coming up with strategies, um, and the strengths and the weaknesses, each group was kind of recording those, um, day of on a big spreadsheet and then we kind of went back to our office, compiled everything. Um, also on the day of, we, we talked about how we should prioritize different actions and different strategies. Um, so that's reflected in, in this as well. And so the, the next kind of steps that, that occur with this, um, like I said, this is the, kind of the second listening session style thing for this. Um, one was held on June 10th, um, which is a required step in, in the process. Um, we will submit on June 30th, so this is kind of another last minute chance to, to have to weigh in and, and talk about the strategies and how they're prioritized and things like that. Um, but we will submit, um, a plan to, to the state on June 30th. Um, we have it all written up and drafted. And kind of what this allows you to do is then go out and apply for action grants for different things that are included in that, that big spreadsheet. It sounds like the next round of action grants will be made available kind of late July into August. That's kind of the rough timeline of, of what they've told us. It sounds like at this point, there's no real one person kind of managing. There's a, they're, they're making a new designated, um, position, um, at, uh, I think it's E O E, yeah, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, someone who would kind of just oversee this. So it should kind of speed the process up and make it a little easier. Um, but again, it sounds like late July into August is when the, the next announcement will be made. Um, that's basically all I have. Um, one other thing, I do have, uh, if folks in the room don't mind, and if you all don't mind, um, a sign-in sheet, which will get kind of attached to the, it'll be one more thing that'll go into the, the report, we submit it on June 30th. Um, so if you don't, I'll happy to answer any, any questions, but.
Anybody have any questions? Do you want the members in the audience to sign this as well?
If that's appropriate, if you don't mind. That was a very quick and broad overview of what was a, about a six to seven hour day.
Any questions? Sure. So have any grants, how long has this, how long has this plant been going on?
This, this. So this is, this is only this, it's fairly new program. This is the second year, uh, the second round of it essentially.
How many, how many grants have been given out?
Um, I don't have a complete list, like off the top of my head. Um, but there is a, the state has put a lot of money into, into this program. Um, I was just looking at, they just released at the beginning of June, um, the most recent round of what they're calling action grants, which are the more implementable projects. Um, and those range kind of from 300,000 to $400,000 projects as some of the, the higher value that I've seen. Um, but they can be anything from kind of vulnerability, risk assessments. There's some, a lot of that are focused on kind of public communication and outreach strategies, um, updating municipal bylaws and regulations and things like that to just kind of allow for and, and encourage different types of development, um, that will be more resilient to climate change and increased rainfall and things like that. Um, so there's a, there really is a wide range of possibilities and things that can, you can then go for and, and apply for.
And some of the things we put in here that we would like, generators and things like that, we put it in there hopefully to apply for grants.
Yep, exactly. Yep, and the, the way the program is kind of set up is, um, they're encouraging municipalities to apply kind of in, in stages. So in, in the first action grant, you might apply for kind of a more designed conceptual kind of piece of the project and later down the line as you would continue to apply for action, excuse me, action grants. Um, you get closer to kind of implementation and, and construction funds and that kind of stuff.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you very much. And, uh, if you want to pass that around.
Awesome.
Once we're done signing it.
Great. I just have one, one more question. So we're kind of set to submit it. We're happy to submit it, um, and obviously CCU when we do, or do you like, do you want to hold it and then submit the plan?
My understanding was that CMRPC was submitting.
Yep, that's right. We just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, Chief Welsh, uh, consider voting to accept bids for the surplus rescue and engine two. Get a hundred grand for him? Hundred grand for him?
I wish. To report, the bidding closed yesterday around one o'clock. My computer blew up. Um, it was remarkable how this system worked, but, um, at noon time, I think it was at $5,000 and by the time we closed, it was at, um, $10,200 was the closing bid on just the rescue truck.
Nice.
We had no action on the, um, fire truck. So I'm here before the board to say, um, would you approve accepting that bid for the rescue truck for the $10,200? I will work with this gentleman to get us a bank certified check, work with the town to get the title and get it all transferred. Pretty much now it gets back in our court. If we get it approved, I reach out to the, to the buyer and we go from there. And then the second phase of this would be, um, I'd ask permission to reduce the price of the fire truck on the next two-week round and I'm going to try to coordinate it with you on next meeting so that we'll do it kind of like we did here. They suggest not doing it for too long of a period. Uh, the two weeks seem to work with this truck, so what I'd like to do is, what I did with this one is I set a, a, a bare minimum. I just didn't want people to start at zero and have to build all the way up to the, to the $4,500 price that we had set. So I set it at four and said, you know, we're looking for a minimum of 45. And so we had action on the rescue on the fire truck. What I'd like to do is start on, at three and say we're, you know, going to take 35 would be my recommendation.
You have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, do as he asks.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you.
Good sale. I like that.
Do we need to vote on this, the one that did sell? Do we need to make any motion on that?
You need to make a motion to accept the bid.
Well, I'm just curious, did the town that was trying to get it?
No. I don't know who this person is. It's just a, a name I got and, and a contact information and 53 bids came in for this one truck, so.
So I guess the motion would be that we authorize the chief to sell it to the high bidder?
The motion would be to accept the high bid for the rescue truck.
Second.
All in favor?
His name is David McCurity.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Next is a request from PNL Deli Corp. for a common Vic and transient vendor license to operate a food truck at 24 Worcester Street.
I have to accuse myself? Hello?
Just introduce yourself. Tell us what you're looking to do.
Yeah, my name is Perry Jan. I currently own a deli out in Charlton on Route 20. I purchased a food truck and, uh, I purchased it from actually Mike. And I was looking to, uh, place it on his property. I believe it's 24 Worcester Street, uh, right past the fire station, a little plot of land there, about a couple acres there. And, uh, that's what I was looking to do.
So was it the section that used to have sheds?
I believe so. Across the street, correct?
It's directly across from his house. I know that. It's got a cut-in. It's got a couple of cut-ins there.
Right.
It's a tree. It's a wide open piece of property.
Is there, is there a driveway?
There's a cut-in.
There, there are two cuts. I believe there are two cuts.
There isn't pavement though. There isn't pavement.
It's not.
No, it's grass. But he built. But he built a pad for the truck. He built a tar pad. Who was, I believe it was an intention to put a food truck there for, it's really some personal, it's got in the way and so.
There was some issue with land in that property. It's off, it's off the land that we.
This, there was issue of the line in the parking lot. This is across the street from the house. There's right now, there's a little shed there.
So it's further away from there.
This is where he originally had his little stand for his vegetables.
It's further away from that shed. I know where that shed is, it's, it's down.
It's a, it's a good sized piece.
Has the police chief looked at this?
Police chief, fire chief and.
Building inspector.
Building, yeah, everybody was all set.
And Board of Health also?
Not yet. I just, I just got it approved for fire. I just got it all tagged today. I don't plan on being there for another two, three weeks. So I was going to have the Charlton Health Inspector inspect it first, and then I was going to come to Town of West Boston to come get it approved for.
Are you going to be using it elsewhere?
Yes, I am. I'm going to be using it at Treehouse Brewery out in Charlton. So it's going to be, I'm not going to be moving around the Town of West Boston though. I'm only going to be stationary there. And when I leave, I'll, I do events and whatever, what have you, fairs and the people that don't Treehouse come to my deli, so they, I'm going to be up there quite a bit. But I'm going to be over here majority of the time though, I have to say. But not around the whole town, parking everywhere, just stationary right there. It's a movable truck, it's not a thing I'm pulling with a trailer. It's almost, I don't know if you've seen a Snap-on tool truck, that's what it, it's a pretty big truck. But it's all, it's got a fry laters, it's got fire suppression system in it, you know, grill, refrigerators, all run on propane.
What's the parking situation where you're going to be?
Well, there's a concrete pad there, not concrete, it's tar. He built a tar pad there.
That's for the truck itself?
Yes.
I'm talking about the people that are coming to.
Use it, oh yeah, well, it's a pretty, pretty huge, it's a pretty big piece of property. I was going to put a couple picnic tables there and, it's a good point, I don't, I don't know, you know, it's a pretty.
I don't know the piece of property that we're talking about.
I mean, I wouldn't want people, I don't think we, people can't stop on the street because it's narrow enough there.
It was sent to the police chief, would you like me to ask the police chief if he has.
Well, I, yeah, it just says that he's, the police department does not have any issues with this request. I mean, traffic, did he give any input on parking?
I, what I do is I scan the packet to the police chief and to everyone else and ask if they have any issues or have any comments.
Yeah, because what I mean, it's too narrow for people to stop on the side of the road without pulling off the road there. And it's, the road's too narrow there.
And it, but there's places to pull off where they could park on the grass?
It's a huge piece of, it's a huge piece of property.
There is a place to pull off.
Okay, I mean, if Dennis doesn't have any issues with the parking, then he.
He could fit 50 cars there if you wanted probably, but it's not, it's not going to happen, but you're probably good.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the vendor license as, as, as long as what else is, okay, I saw the.
It won't go until I get the approval from the Board of Health. So we'll release it, we get that approval. And if there's any issues, we can come back and have a conversation, but I don't think it's going to be, it's a good sized.
Yeah.
Piece of property.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Pose.
So moved.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, welcome to town. Next is the interim DPW Director Gary Keller update.
Evening.
Hello.
I just have a few things to give you updates on. Been some, several concerns, we had a couple of accidents down at River Street, so I wanted to let you know that the convex mirror has been ordered and installed for safety view coming out of River Street, the causeway bridge there, the railings are just horrendous. So that, that mirror has been installed, if the board hears anything about that. I've also checked, because the board has brought it to my attention regarding the Newton, the stop sign at Newton Street and Prospect. So that's what I just learned recently, those solar boards have an 18-month life expectancy for the battery pack. So we're in the process of ordering battery packs for actually all of them, because they've been there for a couple of years plus. They're about $75 a piece, so once that comes in, we will drill those rivers out and reinstall that battery. It's still functional, obviously a stop sign, but we'll, we'll take care of that. That's brought, been brought to my attention by residents and the board alike. The areas for all the solar crossing lights at the school that we've talked about, we were able to borrow a piece of equipment from another community and all the holes have been drilled and the posts have been installed, which is, obviously the concrete takes a little while to set, but it's, it's pretty much ready now and the next step is to install those, those crossing lights. We did have a little problem or concern, we thought that if we pushed a button on one of them, that if the other lights were within 1,000 feet, that all of them would activate, but that has since been rectified, so they will be up and running shortly. Also, because obviously it's been brought to my attention from residents and the board alike about the island at Malden and Goodale regarding a dead tree there. So I have had a contractor look at that. I did call him again this morning, was supposed to look at it last Wednesday, called him to see what the price of that, that's going to be a costly item as Nancy and I have talked about, but it is a dead tree and hopefully we'll be able to get that taken down reasonably so, so. Also, I have met with regarding the Complete Streets project of the sidewalk on Crescent Street. We had an issue with a resident regarding a mailbox placement. I have met with the postmaster and Mr. Gilson of 144 Crescent. There is a test mailbox in place, I've not heard of an objection to it, but we are moving forward with that and that is going along very well. We did, as you know, I think you know, that the extension for that project has been approved. So as opposed to June, at June 30 deadline, we have been extending to December of 2019. Very confident with our conversation with the contractor and Nancy today that that'll, that'll happen and be complete with the exception of minor adjustments before school starts. So I'm actually very, very excited about that and to get that one out of the way. So I did talk to Mr. Gilson today and also visited the residents of the mud, the muds, but I wasn't able to contact them, but I've talked to the staff at the DPW to bring the paperwork down there for an entry permit, which is more or less a temporary easement to give us the right to enter onto and, and equipment and foot traffic on and off during the construction project. Also noted in that, in that temporary easement is that we will return that, any disturbed areas back to, to as close as original condition as possible. So hopefully we'll have that signed and Nancy and I will be in your office shortly. And again, that's, that's going very well with, with the sidewalk project, so I'm very happy about that, that we're moving forward. Also, we have picked up in Nancy's office, the Gateway Sign, it's going to be installed on the signpost that exists on Route 140, so that'll be done by, up by the end of this week. Chapter 90 work is going very well. It hasn't started, but they are anticipate, it is anticipated they will start on the week of July 8th. It's expected to be a three day, three day reclamation project and we'll do some structure adjustments, some culvert removal, and then the paving should take, again, no longer than three days, once all those adjustments are completed. All mailings, I did put a mailing in the selectmen's mail slot today. I don't know if you've seen it, but that has been mailed, those were sent out in the mail to all the abutters of Hosmer and Keys and they all have been notified. I have talked to the police chief. We will have traffic details there, at no time will the road be closed completely. It will be open to traffic, local traffic, and we really don't anticipate any major problems with that. Also, today, I went and visited with Mr. Coveney regarding the Elm Street water break that was repaired and has since settled more. It also, because of the water break, we believe that it did erode or wash out some of the sewer line that goes up the center of Elm. So I am putting together, through Mike, and he was very helpful with this, asked for my input and I for his, to see if we can extend that project to a 500-foot project, therefore eligible for Chapter 90 funds. I don't anticipate it would cost any more than 40K to take care of that, and that would be a full depth structure adjustment and then a repave. So all those things to me are very positive, we're moving in the right direction and, and very happy how things are going, so that's what I have.
Street opening permit, if it's five years, I thought, I thought it was five years, you couldn't touch the street.
There's a moratorium, if you use state aid money, that is five years, unless it's deemed an emergency and you have to cut. I have always followed this, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't understand what your question was.
On a street that we paved in the last five years, you're not supposed to be able to go, someone's not supposed to be able to go into the street and cut it.
Okay, I got it, I just, I just didn't understand your question.
Except for emergency, but on Prospect Street, there was cutting to the street.
They were cutting into the street on Prospect for that connection to utilities, yes, I agree. And I think that was all signed off on prior to my arrival, because that was, that was all done and so it was plated and done, I mean, the paving come out great, they did a good job, a very smooth pave job, but I really had nothing to do with that situation, but.
So who is control, who has to sign off on that?
Who has to, well, it would go through the DPW for signing off for a street opening permit.
And the only reason I'm bringing it up because, like in front of 92 North Main Street, where they cut into the street now, the street was not that old when they did it. I know you're not familiar, you weren't here, but it's all, it's a big pothole now where they, where they did it, because they don't compact, they don't use liquid fill, you know, when they do it, to do it right, they should use liquid fill, the same with, you know, when they did the senior center, the, the street, that has to be done, again, because it's not done right.
It, as it should be, and I agree with you, 92 North Main, I've seen that, are you referring to the manhole in the middle of the road? I have talked to those involved, especially the state with that, they do have a barrel on that and that will be repaired. I agree with you 100% on that, that is something that was, I believe, signed off before my arrival and it should not be done unless it's an emergency. Like I say, the state aid, using state money for that, there was a five year, I've always followed a seven year rule when it comes to new pavement. So they will be watched and apologize, I apologize, the department apologizes for any of those circumstances that did happen, but it will not happen again.
Can't we require the person that does cut it open that they put the correct basin?
Yeah, flow, it's called, well.
Yeah, right, so.
Mr. Haley's talking about flowable fill, that should be done.
You would require?
Yeah.
You would require?
I would, I would.
Certainly wasn't done over.
Especially when you have different utility lines such as gas or water or sewer that are intermixed in that, in that trench, that should be flowable fill.
So from now on, we're going to make sure, because it doesn't look like it happened at this.
Right, that's correct.
They made the town do it when we did in front of the police station.
Right.
They made us do flowable fill.
Now, just in regards to the, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the stop signs, the batteries, is that why they weren't blinking the other day, because some of the batteries have gone?
Right, and I didn't, obviously I didn't know that till I talked to the solar traffic management company, that they only have an 18-month shelf life, once they're, once they're in working, and those have been up for two plus years. Some of them have been replaced, it's a, it's a job that the DPW will take care of, they've got to drill out the rivets of the panel of the sign, insert the new battery, and life goes on, but that's what it is, it's simply a battery.
And then in regards to, we talked about some catch basins that need to be rebuilt, has that started? There's some from the winter, and I think there's one on Crescent Street or on.
There are many catch basins that need attention, and I fully agree with that, and they have, even like the one in the parking lot out at this building, they are being prepped to be completed. And again, the only thing that's holding us up on all of that is until the new budget comes into play where I can afford to buy the, the barrel blocks, the concrete and so on and so forth, in some instances grates and frames to replace that.
So that'll start next week-ish?
Excuse me?
That'll start some next week.
Start, yeah, once July 1st rolls around, that magic date that everybody's waiting for, we can start buying some supplies to get this done. I fully agree with you, manholes, catch basins, state of Massachusetts horrendous with the freeze thaw cycle. So I agree with you, certainly have talked to the crew about it and they do have to be worked on. And they will be.
Yeah, I just want to take a look at nine Colonial Hill, I think that the metal is falling in, the resident questioned me about it and I said.
Colonial Hill, number nine? Okay, you got it.
I think the metal that you have there might be falling in or it's getting worse.
Okay.
On the crosswalk signs, are those hardwired or are they solar?
Solar.
Okay. And then you said approximately 40K for Elm Street, assuming it was 40K, what's left in Chapter 90 at that point, if you had to, after that 40K, what will be left?
There will be, I mean, I don't know, we have not, obviously we haven't spent any of it until they start the Chapter 90 work.
We have a bunch of stuff budgeted, I'm saying, all the work that's done plus this.
Right.
What are we looking at having left for the remainder of the year?
We're probably looking at roughly out of the 40K, roughly two and a quarter to 230 left.
Okay.
There are going to be some additional expenses that come out of Chapter 90, minimal, I hope, not to exceed 20K for the reengineering and design of the Crescent Street sidewalk. So as you all know, we moved that from one side of the street to the other, much, much better location. So there will be some additional costs to that, but again, that'll come out of Chapter 90.
And I've actually had residents say to me, you can't put it on that side, I said, oh, that's been fixed, so that was a good call.
Oh, thank you, yeah, we actually worked very hard together with Nancy and many site visits, the engineers, the neighbors, been very helpful with this cooperative effort and DCR also, so hopefully that'll be certainly a success.
Good, I'm sure you will, but can we just make sure that the battery's going to some type of municipal calendar, that we know somebody that's in your position?
Actually, they.
Because it looks like these crosswalks are going to have to be changed in a couple of years.
Exactly, Mr. Richard, they will be, what I have to find out further from, from the solar traffic management company is, you know, once, again, and I, I'm sorry, I keep saying this, but once July 1st comes around and we know the age of those crosswalk lights, it would be nice to have those on, on the shelf, ready to go. My issue with that is I have to check on the shelf life of them.
Right.
So I have to make sure that happens. There may be two to three days out as far as getting them in stock once ordered, but certainly, I agree with you 100%, those should be, should be a stock item.
And something we, we know for future DPW directors know, but that's one, one of the many things that come up every couple of years or every year.
What do you mean, future DPW directors? What's he trying to say?
Well.
Anybody have anything else?
Just, one quick one though, when we, I put in front of you, a notice that's going to go out, when we do the Crescent Street project, we're going to have, give notice to abutters within 200 feet, and we're also going to have an informational meeting, so people can come out and if they have any questions, they can ask the engineer who will be here. It's going to be on a Monday night.
July 22nd?
July 22nd, is that what it is? And we also sent out the notices for the repaving on Keys and Hosmer, went to Keys, Hosmer, Laurel Street. So everybody will, all the residents will get a notice in the mail and there'll be a message on the electronic sign, so everybody will know.
We don't have copies.
It's right in front of you, it's not with your packet.
It might, I think I gave that gentleman my email.
The memorandum?
Yes, that's.
So that's going out to the residents on?
That's on the Crescent Street project, because we're going to have an informational meeting, and we did, when we did the sidewalk project here.
Okay.
And the engineers will be here to answer anybody's questions, they'll have maps and so that's the plan I'm doing, just so that everybody knows what's going on.
Yeah, Nancy and I have talked about that and I just, I just think that it's best that folks, if they have any concerns, certainly go, it's more of a question and answer session, but as far as transparency goes and so the town, the residency abutters, certainly the schools know what we're doing there, so if there's any questions, they can certainly voice their opinions and ask questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, so I can, I can forward all that information to another DPW director and.
Yeah, tack it, tack it's that all up and get it ready to go.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good night.
Good night, thank you. Next is new business, concurrence on the reappointment of Norma Chanis to the Town Wide Planner Committee effective July 1st, 2019, for term to expire on June 30th, 2022.
So. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. So moved. Concurrence on the reappointment of Gary Flynn to the Open Space Implementation Committee Concurrents on the reappointment of Gary Flynn to the Open Space Implementation Committee as the Parks Commissioner's Designee effective July 1st, 2019. Term to expire June 30th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Concurrents on the reappointment of Christine Mezika to the Personnel Board, effective July 1st, 2019. Term to expire June 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Consider voting to recognize the acceptance of the following donations for the Ban-Stant Committee and to approve expenditure of these funds for general purposes. $265 each in memory of Pauline McCormick, from Dr. Michael Casey, and from Webster First.
So moved.
Second. His free will?
Free will donation.
I'm sorry.
From July 23rd concert of $168.97. You want to re-motion it?
Aye, so moved. Put them all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Concurrents on the appointment of Tony Sanders to the PEG Board, effective July 31st, correction, July 1st, 2019. Term to expire June 30th, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Concurrents on the appointment of Thomas Dillon to the Board of Health, effective June 28th, 2019. For term to expire on April 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Concurrents on the appointment of Peter Bove as a special officer to work detail assignments, effective July 1st, 2019. For term to expire on June 30th, 2020 at a rate of $49 per hour.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved. Concurrents on the appointment of Richard Simorano as a resident to the PEG Board, effective July 1st, 2019. For term to expire June 3rd, 2020. Should that be 30th?
Yes.
June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Consider voting to send a letter congratulating Kathleen Theohardes on her appointment as Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs and request she recommend to the governor that the fund, the funds in the bond bill for the Goodell Park project be released.
There's a letter, a proposed letter.
So this letter is very similar to the one we sent to Secretary Beaton that got no action. I assume she got, she got appointed in May. Can't hurt to ask again.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Consider a ban on single-use plastic bags. Mr. Hadley?
This is my, my idea. I, I just think, I think the state's going to do it very soon. I'd just like to get us ahead of the curve and move on with them. I mean, they always, I think it's one of the most things that gets thrown away or gets used in not throwing away correctly. Let me put it that way. So I just think it's something, it's time has come to eliminate it.
Have a motion?
I'll make a motion if the town moves it to. What, we have to go to Board of Health first?
We certainly need someone who is going to monitor this. I sent you some information about the town.
From Shrewsbury?
They actually have two volunteer recycle people who go around.
I would say the motion should start the process is what we should be looking to do if.
Okay, I'll make a motion to start the process.
Second.
Discussion. Chris, you want to go first?
Well, I just, I don't think it's something the town should ban. I mean, I think if the state wants to ban it, I mean, you go to some towns and, for instance, you go to Shrewsbury now and you buy this at Home Depot and they give you a brown paper bag this big. So I'm filling up my recycling. I know you can recycle the brown paper bag, but I, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I know Mr. Hadley said that there was a lot of trash from plastic bags. I think it, there was a lot more nips by far.
It was definitely more nips.
Right now, the state's trying to ban that, so I don't know what the answer is.
Nancy, is that still our biggest contaminant with our recycling is our plastic bags getting caught in the recycling plant?
There are a number of, there are a number of them, and Norma Chanis is here tonight from SWAT. And I think this is something they're supporting as well.
Right, it's still one of our number one things that get caught up in the machines.
Can you, you want to come join the discussion on this? If you hear from the SWAT team, if you want to come up to the table? Just introduce yourself so the public knows.
Norma Chanis, and I serve on the SWAT committee which looks at solid waste. This is something our committee's discussed a few times. Any town that I've spoken with, the issue is always the enforcement. They, you know, you go through everything it takes to get this in place, but then how do you make it happen? Plastic bags are something that can be recycled, are being recycled. Personal opinion, it's not the biggest thing out there that the town should be concerned about, but it is something that a lot of towns are doing. Many are doing it in conjunction with other things like banning Styrofoam. Or nip bottles have come into it, bottled water. So it's a bunch of different things that different towns have looked at. Any single-use plastic is a problem. It's just pick one.
The enforcement is what, that the stores don't use plastic bags anymore?
Yep. Someone has to make sure that happens.
So the residents, for instance, they shop anywhere else that has plastic bags, it's still.
Right.
It's still going to come into our recycling, it's still going to be.
Right, it's still, your vegetables are still going to come in a bag. It's the, you know, the packaging to take things out of the store, like you said.
Still going to come in a bag.
Still going to come in bags, you know, so it's only for the people that shop in town and recycle in town that it's going to help us in regards to recycling.
Yes, it would be limiting anyone who uses those bags in town. Probably Walmart is our biggest store. Other than that, I think it would primarily be the restaurants with takeout bags.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's plenty of stores that, I, so you said it's not, it's not the most?
Well, I just think that there is recycling in place now for plastic bags. Every supermarket takes them back, Walmart takes them back. Most of them go to trucks and gets turned into decking. That's been in place for years. If people don't bring them back, that doesn't happen. So to me, it's more of an education versus any Styrofoam cup out there. There is no way to recycle that or the Styrofoam takeout containers. There isn't recycling in place for that. If we were going to try to attack something, I guess I would look at that. But to Mike's point, it's not a recycling contaminant so much. The bags are causing problems for the haulers, for the processors.
So the garbage bag, we throw all our stuff in this plastic. That's not a problem for them, but the.
Because that's not recycled.
Oh, if it goes into recycling, people throw it in their garbage bag, it can't be, it can't be, it can't be recycled in our town.
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
It can't go into our recycling. Plastic bags.
Plastic bags should not go into our recycling.
That's what's causing the problem, not the fact that we're throwing them into the green bags.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, so I mean, I think the, one of the issues that I hear a lot about is pizza boxes. So, I mean, are we going to ban pizza boxes? I mean, and make people, and they can't put them in Styrofoam, so I don't know. If I get a pizza, I think they have to carry it out in nothing because I don't know what the.
You can put a clean pizza, pizza box in there. It just can't be, yeah. And don't bring it to the recycle center with pizza still in it, please.
I mean, that's, I think that's, that's, that's the issue with pizza boxes, you know. What's a clean pizza box over?
It's got no grease on it, it's clean.
If there's a little grease on it, that means the whole box can't be recycled or can that piece be ripped and thrown into the rubbish?
Again, depending on who's doing the recycling, how it's getting handled, that's one of those things that some towns put them in recycling, some towns don't.
Even if.
For the pizza box.
Even, yeah.
It, yeah, like I said, it's sort of pick your, pick your evil and go after it. If it's bags, we can look at bags.
Mr. Chairman, does that cost us anymore at the recycling center when they have to clean those bags out of their processing machine? Is that an extra cost to the town?
I don't know that.
I don't think so.
I think to some extent you could say yes, because the more their machinery is down, the more their costs go up, that eventually affects us.
The only reason I'm saying is I remember talking to about four years ago about this and they were saying it was clogging up their machines. That was a big issue.
But we have a set rate, excuse me, we have a set rate per ton that we pay them for solid waste. If we're recycling stuff, they don't charge us for the recycling. If people are throwing plastic bags in there, yes, it gums up their machinery, but we don't get charged for recycling. They don't, I don't think they turn around and take it and add it to our town's, you know, the truck gets weighed. So that, so it's ultimately when we go out to bid to get a new contract.
That could be.
It might cost us, but.
Oh, that's what I was wondering.
Right, just like it's, it's going to cost more because less things are being recycled. The markets have dipped. So now that's trash. So what used to be recycled is going to now go into the trash stream, which will eventually cost us more. I mean, it comes down to someone's got to pay the price and it's whoever at this point generated that item until there's a little more on producer responsibility to take that stuff back.
Do some towns take plastic bags in their recycling, did you say? Oh, you don't know the answer?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
So I guess the answer could be in regards to the rubbish. If they see something that shouldn't be in recycling, they may just take the whole recycling bin and throw it into the rubbish. If not only plastic bags, it could be Styrofoam.
You're talking the collectors?
Yeah. Instead of, if he sees Styrofoam from packing in the recycling, he may just, he's not going to go and pick these five things and go and.
The guy that's doing the, the guy that's doing the collecting is just putting it in a truck. He's not the one who's going to end up sorting it out. I don't think he has a dog in the fight.
He could throw, he could throw it in the rubbish instead of contaminating the recycling. I don't know the answer. We can ask them, I guess.
I think they sort through it at the plant.
Yeah, most of it's at the plant. I have seen some things rejected curbside in town. I mean, if it's, you know, a blatant error.
Our contamination rate is pretty low.
Yeah.
It was. You know, we're doing, we're doing a good job out there.
I know the best area too.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, I just think it's a place to start, whether we do this and we do Styrofoam or something, we have to start somewhere. And I think, like I said, I think the state's going to do it very, very soon anyhow, but I think we should get ahead of the curve and do it on our own. But that's my opinion.
I have a couple of thoughts. I actually made notes for the first time since I've been doing this. Paper, Chris said this too, paper bags take up more space than landfills. And where plastic bags have been banned, there's been an increase of heavy plastic reusable bags that you pay a dollar for ending up in the landfill. Paper and reusable bags take more energy to produce and more greenhouse gases are made while producing them. And reusable bags are not reused enough to make them more environmentally sound than plastic bags. Per the information provided when we approved the clothing recycling plastic bags, when we did the clothing recycling thing, plastic bags make up only 0.3% of landfill waste. Reusable bags are unsanitary, they're generally not washed and become harbingers of bacteria, especially when you use them for groceries. And if they are washed, the energy to wash them makes them even a bigger environmental footprint and becomes worse. And most important piece is I'm just not a big fan of banning things that are illegal product. Some other options are require stores that hand out plastic bags to have a recycle bin for their bags in the supermarkets, like, for the bags like supermarkets already do. Can't believe I'm saying this, but follow the lead of New York City and require stores charge a nickel a bag. Not a tax, they get to keep it, but if people, I, I went to Long Island a couple of weekends ago and I went and bought some things at the grocery store and they said, do you want a bag? I said, yeah, I want a bag. And there was a nickel charge on my receipt. Is it going to defer every, you know, defer everybody from buying a bag? No, but it could add to the, the, making it better. And another option is you require stores that have to use biodegradable bags. They're out there, they exist, they look just like plastic. They're more expensive than normal plastic bags, and again, the stores can charge for these biodegradable bags if they so choose. But as far as banning plastic bags, I agree with you. I think the state's going to do it. Things can be taken out of our hands probably before the end of the year, but I'm just not in favor of doing it at the local level.
And I just, as Mr. Hadley said, it's somewhere to start, but where do, where do we end? Where's the end to this? If we start doing it locally, banning Styrofoam, I don't know, the list goes on and on, cups, you know. I don't know. That's my thought.
Any further discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay?
No.
It's a tie, so the motion does not carry. I got to find my last page of mine. Consider changing the name of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board. Mr. Hadley, this was another one for you.
He's on a roll tonight.
Also, again, we've moved into this century and I think it's time that the Board of Selectmen move into the Select Board. Obviously, we have females that are on the board in a lot of towns and we just had one in our town and I think it's the proper thing to do. Not for a few generations. I just think it's, now's the time to do it. It's not going to cost a lot of money. We have to go, I think, I'm pretty sure we have to go to the General Assembly for a special.
For a special act?
We have to go to town meeting and get town meeting approval.
Approval, then go to. Right, but I think it's, it's not going to cost a lot of money. We have to change some of the signs and stuff like that, but I think we can do that. But I think it's definitely worth something right now.
Let's do a motion first and.
I make a motion to change the name from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Will, will we have to go legislative through the special act to change the name also? So not just the town meeting, attorney general?
We have to go to town meeting first.
And then we'll have to go legislative.
And you have to change the special act and then you'd have to change all the bylaws, general bylaws, zoning bylaws.
Can that be done via a single, instead of saying change this bylaw?
I think, instead of saying change this article or that article.
Right, just everywhere it says select men, change it to select board.
Remove selectmen and insert select board, but it would have to be one article at town meeting. Yes, it could, yes, that's it.
And I would just say that we're going to, all the signs and all the money we spent, I mean, you say it doesn't cost much, but I think the signs here would cost a lot. I think we should contact a sign company to just change that instead of rebuilding all the signs.
I agree with that.
I mean, because it would, what did you spend? We spent a lot of money on signs.
We spent thousands of dollars. They're beautiful signs.
So I mean, we could have somebody come in and just maybe.
Have him come out and he can look at it and give, give me a price on what it would cost.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Concurrents on the hiring of Karen Hennessy to the position of clerk in the office of the Treasurer Collector, effective July 2nd, 2019. For a maximum of five hours a week at step two of grade two, $15.34 per hour.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So move. Nancy, Town Ministry is reporting.
The first thing, I was asked for an update on the blight bylaw. What I did is I gave you in the packet in front of you, the research I did back in 2019 with a copy of the Board of Health meeting minutes. At which this was discussed with a couple of selectmen. I don't know where you want to go with this.
Pat and I, you want to talk about?
Yeah, you can, you have the package in front of you.
Pat and I, we started this like last November or something.
Yeah, about a year ago.
So I guess the bottom line is that we were told that it was almost impossible for the town to, or a lot of work for the town to do a button blight law.
And the Board of Health wasn't really in favor?
And they weren't in favor of it. We were surprised.
Yeah.
We were very surprised that, so, I mean, I think it's something that I still do, something needs to be done. And I don't know if we can get someone else to do it or if the Board of Health doesn't want to do, but Board of Health should be the one that's doing it. That's their, that's their area, their expertise.
I, I don't have my, but why did the Board of Health not want to do it?
It's, I'm sure it's in the minutes, but this is from memory from almost a year ago. They basically said that it's almost impossible to enforce and.
As for many things like this.
The enforcement person ends up being the building inspector and everywhere where they've been passed, it just, it doesn't work. That, that was the overall gist of what the Board of Health told us. And for that reason, they were not in favor of generating a blight bylaw.
So as Mr. Hadley said, is that the only route? If they say no, it... I know, it's one of our goals, isn't it?
Yeah.
One of the top...
It is.
So if they say no, does that mean we can't still move forward with it or? I don't know the answer.
Um, do you want to bring them in and have a discussion?
Maybe, maybe we should.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we went to, we went to their meeting and, and it was a, an agenda item on their meeting and they basically said, "No, not really." I, I think, yeah, if they came here and it was...
Is there another department you think you'd rather see this fall under, a shared responsibility? We could have...
It should be the Board of Health.
Well, it should be, definitely should be the Board of Health with the building inspector as the enforcement officer. That's my opinion.
I agree. See, if we could invite them to a future meeting to have an open discussion about, you know, revisit the discussion about the blight bylaw.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, the next item is, um, consider signing a contract extension with CM Geeks. Our contract with CM Geeks, the one year expires June 30th, 2019. We do have the option of two one-year extensions. Before I brought this, before the board, I reached out to a number of our different departments and everybody has glowing reports. They have been wonderful to deal with, they are conscious of the budget, they, um, they are prompt. Anytime you send them an email, they're here, they've been very supportive to the staff and I recommend that the board approve a one-year extension of the contract with CM Geeks for IT services.
So moved. Second.
Are the terms the same as...
Exactly.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, and at the last meeting, we had the presentation from Simply, um, we had the presentation for the collection of soft recyclables, simply recyclable. Um, and we didn't recommend to, we recommended to go forward, but I would like you to vote to sign and enter into a three-year contract with them. SWAT has been working on finalizing the mailer and, um, there are other items that we need to go forward. One is going to be, we're going to generate a list of all the, um, addresses that we pick up. Um, and they're going to do the mailer to all of the residents so they know what the program's all about. I sent them the town seal and SWAT's also working on doing, um, a program on cable, on the pink bags.
Make sure they have the proper spelling of the town name.
We will look very closely on that, but if you could vote to, um, sign the contract, that would be wonderful.
So they're going to do the mailer and they're going to list everything?
They're going to list everything. They listed a number of them.
The mailer doesn't have space for everything. It's a small postcard. The website, you have everything.
I thought it was a pretty big postcard.
Okay.
Is that what they said? I thought the gentleman that was here, I thought he said, "We can put whatever we want on it."
Yeah, it was half a sheet of paper.
Yeah. I, I thought, yeah, it would be nice to put everything. That's what, I thought the gentleman said, "If that's what you want."
Well, you know, we could do, in addition to that, is we have twice a year, we do our mailer for town meeting. We could include something on that as well.
I, I think the postcard should, shouldn't just say clothing. List of, list some of the other big pots and pans or some of the other bigger items and then say, "And many other things, please visit our website."
Yes.
Because the one from Royalston, I think, was that we had?
Just said clothing.
Just said clothing.
The markup they did for us had, let's see if I can remember, clothing, coats, shoes and accessories. And we kind of played with that. I mean, coats are clothing, but, you know, that gives us one extra word that we could change to something else. Um, and they do say go to their fax to see what else is available. I'd rather have it directed to a page that we can maintain here in town.
I agree, but I think it needs to, that needs to be, there needs to be something on it that says, "And so much more." Go look at our website, you know? Don't, make that a prominent thing and many more items, visit our website.
That's a great idea.
In that way...
Is there any chance they could print any of that stuff on the bag itself? You know, like a list of the things?
I can certainly ask that. I mean...
No, I think the bags, the bags were all, the bags didn't have...
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody has done it that way.
The town symbol.
I have the bag in my...
Yeah, you don't have to get it. I just wondered if they could do something like that, just put a list of stuff.
I don't get this, there's, there's about 14 things they take.
Right.
I mean, that's cutting all clothing and making it all one instead of saying men's clothes, women's clothes, children's clothes, coats and jackets, that's clothing.
Right.
So that could, it's like 12 or 14 things. I can't imagine, they, they go down a little on the font and they can fit everything on this card. I, I mean, I thought the gentleman said, "We can put everything on the card," but that's, I think it should.
The markup they did only listed about five things and then directed people to a website. I can ask them to do a mock-up with...
That's, that's what I was...
And that particular list, I think, that you're pulling from their fax, doesn't have anything about small appliances or electronics. Um, I can pull lists from other towns that they have on their website that are more encompassing.
More we can put on that card because a lot of people are going to look at this and just...
They're not going to go to the webpage.
They're not, they're not going to go to the webpage. Whatever's on that card, that's it. That's the one chance we have for them to say, "Oh, this is how I get rid of my toaster oven that I don't want anymore or my microwave that, that still works that I just replaced because I got an under the counter cabinet one." Right now, you go, all right, yeah, you can go to the recycling center, but no, they sit in people's basements for years until they get ready to move, then they go in a dumpster.
Well...
I can certainly go back to them with that, um, and, but I think this is like, it's a one-time mailer that goes out with the bags and they've already seen that a lot of people don't even remember ever getting that. So I'm not sure how much goes into the card.
If they're only putting 10 things on a bag, how much can it be? That way, every bag they pick up, they go, "Oh geez, we can put this in it too."
I, the bags were, from when they gave the presentation, the, the card is town-specific. I don't believe the bags were town-specific. The bags just say, what is it, waste zero?
No.
I thought it said, "Somebody could have a town seal on it."
Does it?
It does have the town...
The bag has a town?
I don't, I don't know.
Why don't you go get the bag?
I have to go get it now, hang on.
Can you put computers in this?
I don't know, Chris, can you put computer stuff?
Well, see, see, that's, that's the question I would have for them is, it doesn't say anything about toasters on their website, but they did say, so it's not on their website, it's not on the card, so what's the use of sending people to the website? I know, I'm not asking you.
Right, but what some towns have done is if there's also on their website, there's a place to see the towns that have signed up already. So if you looked at, say, Natick, for example, they have, it goes to the town's webpage that says, "This is how the program works. This is what we take." Other towns may only take textiles.
But they have the whole back, too. You could put something there as well.
Right, but that, that doesn't have the town seal on it.
That's a generic bag, that would mean they...
Doesn't have the town seal, you're right.
So they're using that bag for every town. The mailer that goes with it is a town-specific mailer.
Yes.
And that will have our town website on it.
Yeah, that, I can't believe they can't put 14, a list of 14 items, but, but again, the...
Well, it's, it's that small side where you see the dots at the top, that's where the items go, right there. We have the three things, that's where they would have to list it.
And then, then in regards to toasters and things, it's not on their website, it's not on the card, so how will anybody know besides, "We asked them and they told us"?
I think we direct people not to that website, but to our town page where we can maintain that.
What we could do under here, where they have these, if there's only 14 items, we could use small font and just put it right over here and maybe shrink this down.
Well, there's 14 items without listing electronics and those things. I mean, I'll, I'll take a stab at it, I'll ask them to mock it up and I'll send it out to you.
Thank you. That would be great.
What is the timing of this as far as when we're, when they're planning on mailing these? Is it...
They need the contract before we could really do much of anything. They did a mock-up without a contract in good faith, but I'll go back to them with feedback from the committee and from the selectmen.
So, I mean, we're meeting again on the 10th. Is this something that you anticipated having to them and out the door and started within the next two weeks?
I think we should, I would hope they could do the mock-up by then.
So...
I'm not sure how long it's going to take them to launch.
Rather than...
Typically, it's six to eight weeks, but they were trying to prep for us, so I don't really know. I will find out.
The reason I'm asking is do we want to just, I mean, I think Nancy has heard what we're asking to have on there. Do we want to just let Nancy be the final approval of the mailer rather than have to wait?
And we can always scan it and I can send it to you. And you can say, "Geez, I'd like you to tweak it a little more" or whatever.
Right.
I think that that would be...
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah. So make a motion to, uh, sign the contract with soft recyclables, simply recycling?
Soft recyclables.
The simple recycling does the actual processing. Um, waste zero was sort of the relationship manager.
Yeah, it's simply recycling.
So there's two, there's two different contracts?
No, collection of soft recyclables with simply recycling. Simply recycling is the company.
Okay, make that, move second.
Yeah, so I'm looking, I'm just, yeah, that's, I'm looking at Ashland. It says, "All types of men's, women's and children's clothing, shoes and accessories, home goods such as kitchenware, books and toys." So again, we can just say clothing and everything else should be in the, you know, that's, that's...
This is all science.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you for your...
Thank you.
And, um, the last item is to, I'm recommending that we sign a trash metering agreement with waste zero. Um, this, by doing this, they will lock the current price that we're paying for our trash bags in for three years and they're offering to cut the price of the bags by $1 per case. The win is that, waste zero is they get the money sooner and, um, they cut the town, their net share of the bag revenue.
How do they get the money sooner?
Because right now, we process the whole amount and we give them a check for their amount. What they'll do is they'll take, they'll take the full amount, they'll take the full amount, they get the money from the vendors and right now, they send it to us. But what they will do is there's a turnaround time from when they send it to us and we send them their check.
So they send us the full amount for the bags that were sold?
Right. And we give them their cut. What we'll do here is they will take their cut out and give us the net.
How do we monitor that we're getting the right amount? How do we know that, that the bags that were sold? So if there's 40...
Well, they'll give us a sheet of everything that was sold. They'll give us an inventory of what was sold.
I guess the only question I'd have, that's a good question, but the only question I've had, when they sent us the money, how do we know that they sent it all to us?
Because right now, we're, right now, we're getting, are we getting a check from waste zero or are we getting a check from the vendors right now?
We're getting a check, I believe, from waste zero.
All the money goes to them and they send us all the money, then we send them their cut.
That just seems ridiculous.
Yeah, I think this, I think we have to trust that they're not going to... I mean, they're going to send us a list of how many bags.
We sent it to SWAT and they thought it was probably a much streamlined process. And they're actually, will save a dollar per case on the bags and they'll stay with the same price for three years.
How many are in a case, do you know?
Will you look at this? Nancy is looking at it.
Yeah, a dollar per case is not going to be all that much money.
It's not going to, maybe a penny a bag.
A nickel a roll?
Well, it's something.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, petty, it might be, might be...
But apparently, this, this woman was in discussion with Butch before he left and they didn't get a chance to, um, complete the transaction, so...
Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Senior Center update, John?
General update, the, uh, as everyone knows, the work is still continuing on the outside, uh, grading in the field. Uh, they are working on it. They, again, we are holding the money, so no one's going to get paid until the town is satisfied it's done correctly.
Approval of invoices, K.L. Owen Benick Associates, number 5999, $2,677.50.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Yankee Engineering and Testing, 25995, $515.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. W.B. Mason, number 1656, 52249, $2,399.97 to be paid of the Steve McReddician gift.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Physio Control Inc., number 119035043, $1,495, CR plus AED unit.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Bounty, number 83203610, $217.99 cabinet for AED unit.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Uh, CM Geeks Inc., number 1933 for $2,970, labor for PC setups, routers, network phones.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So moved. Global Equipment Fuel Oil Fill Ladder, $2,365.55.
So moved. Second.
Did that come?
It did.
Okay.
It, it arrived and they're waiting for, I think the DPW is going to go bolt it down for them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. RAC invoice number 13 for $278,191.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Uh, final bonding number to the town accountant. Give the update on that?
Um, Tony is recommended we go with the full amount for the bonding.
I have a question. Um, I know we've captured on bans and the only problem I have to go full amount is, if you don't use it, you're paying interest for 20 years.
Totally agree.
So how do we do that?
If we borrow too little and we run short, then we have nowhere to...
So...
We don't have a pocket to take it from.
$180,000 positive variance right now. We can borrow $49,990.99 more than we need and then take that money and pay off the extra amount we borrowed. Once we hit $50,000, we can only use that for a future 20-year borrowing. Like you said, it'll, we'll sit there and we'll be paying interest on it. The flip side to that is the interest rate we're going to get is, do we have the interest rate yet?
I don't think so. I didn't see anything.
The interest rate is going to be something on the order of, of probably two and a half, 3%. We currently don't really have much of an investment policy with the town's money. Um, that's one of the things I, I intend to speak to the new treasurer-collector about and obviously come back with a, a recommendation to the board. But we're probably, even if we are borrowing and paying 20 years' worth of interest, we're probably going to get a like amount of interest if it's sitting in the bank. a like amount of interest if it's sitting in the bank. That's the flip side to, yes, we're paying the interest, but we're going to earn interest on it because we're going to have it. I would prefer not to borrow it.
But I guess my question, we can't do another band for another year? Can't do it. Okay. I just, I don't know if you would know.
Why not?
We probably could, but why wouldn't we just...
I mean, I, I agree. I mean, we told the residents, whatever we don't spend, we're not going to borrow. That's how we've told everybody, every, every time we bring these forward. So the first thing we're doing is, there's $180,000 and we're going to borrow it just in case we need it. I mean, we have to know. When are we going to know if we need it?
We're, we're almost done. We have a shed that we're going to have to, that we haven't...
But we have the extra, the other $15,000 we're going to get from Steve McReddician. You know, I, I know they mentioned something about the patio, where they're selling bricks for the patio.
The only, the only thing that, there was some, a couple issues with the contractor with invoices he didn't think he was, he was responsible for. They could come back after us for that. That was, that was some of the money. But I, I still think, I'm not sure why we can't borrow six more months on a band.
And then I'm questioning, what, we don't know where this, the failed issue is going to come. What if they give money back or there's money, I mean, we're going to, when does this have to be borrowed by? Is there a date? When do we have to lock into it?
She was looking, the, the, an August 14th meeting wasn't going to work because we were past the date. That was in the email.
It was two days beyond the date that it had to be in.
So we're going to have a meeting, we were, well, that's on, later on in the agenda, but I think we're going to have another meeting before, we're going to have July 10th meeting.
We will have another meeting.
And, and we're probably going to have another meeting after that.
But Leslie told me she needed by the end of July, she, I mean, by the end of June, she needed the figure.
So we have to make the decision tonight.
I guess...
I don't want to say borrow the whole thing.
No, yeah. Again, what if some money comes back? That means we're going to borrow that money for the next 20 years.
If, if we do what is currently committed or currently anticipated to be committed plus $50,000, that gives us a $50,000 cushion to close out this project. And anything that is above and beyond that, you know, anything that we don't use, we can just pay towards the note. If it goes above the $50,000, we still have some money left from the Steve's grant, and something like the shed, if they wanted to do that after the fact, that doesn't necessarily have to come out of borrowed money. A six or $8,000 shed can come out of the operating budget if, if that needs to happen. There's nothing to prevent us from using operating funds to, to augment this project.
Do, do, so we know, we need the amount of the committed funds.
So I would get that from Tony.
And I, I think, or pass it, 49, what'd you say?
Well, I mean, right now, one of the things that's not committed is signage. I know there was $5,000 for, there's five, specialty signage.
Oh, specialty.
But there's $5,000 in the budget for specialty signage. Lisa had said she's going to need some specialty signage. We have money for that. We don't know what she's going to need yet. That's going to come out of this $50,000 amount. So I think if we just do 50,000 of what is currently...
Committed.
Committed or anticipated to be committed, you know, like we haven't paid all the bills yet, but stuff that we know that's going to happen, all the holdbacks that we have, we get that number, we add $50,000 to it. If, Chris, you shaking your head?
Well, yeah. This wasn't an issue with the police station that we were, had a, you know, a gun to our head like this that we...
Because we kept doing bands. That's why I can't understand why we can't do it again.
Do another band and then, I, I don't know the answer. We can't, we have till the 30th, so we're going to have to have another meeting to discuss this. But I mean, no, I, I really, what we promised the residents were, whatever we don't spend, we're not going to borrow. And just putting $50,000 aside, that tells the residents that they're going to spend that $50,000 because it's there and we're borrowing it, guaranteed.
No, because anything that's left, well, the, the reason we're choosing $50,000 is because that amount is, that's the, the limit. It has to be under $50,000. Whatever's left, you can use to pay down principal. We could just say, "We didn't spend it. We can't spend it on anything else. It can only be spent on this project."
Right. But I think we should look into the band. I, again, I don't recall ever having a meeting that we had a gun to our head, that we needed to get this done. I mean, the police station, we didn't ban...
We banned it. We did bans on this. We didn't borrow for this building.
So we did the police station.
Till the police station was done.
Yeah, so, so I want to get a total price and then borrow.
Perhaps you want, want to make a motion that, we'll speak with the town accountant and see if it's best to ban this, do one more band until we have firmer numbers and perhaps it will be a decision with, I'll call the chairman and he could make that decision of whether we go with the band and pay the band costs or we go with the final borrowing.
The band's always a lot lower, isn't it?
The band rate is going to be much cheaper and there's, there's some small...
Fees.
Fees associated with the band, but the rate is going to be cheaper. I can tell you right now, if, if I have to make a decision, my, if I was, if the decision's put in my hand, my decision is going to be the fully committed amount that we have as of today plus $50,000. That's the amount that I'm going to say to borrow.
Because we can take the $50,000 off there.
And repay, and pay back the, the overage back to the, the bonding. I don't think we're going to go that much. I, I don't see $50,000 of stuff that we have left. Something comes up that we need more money. We have operating, we have an operating budget that we're going to have to make some changes, but we can, it's not going to be $200,000 we're going to need. You're talking a, a, you know, probably a figure that's less than $10,000. We can find in the operating budget and, and move some stuff around and even potentially go back, I'm, I'm not going to say go back to town meeting and say, "Hey, we, we didn't borrow enough," but there's enough stuff that we can do to finish the project at $50,000 cushioned between now and the end of project, which I can't imagine is not going to be enough. But it's not like, we're not going to be able to finish the project.
The project's finished.
Right. But, but it is, but it isn't. There's still punch list item things that, "Oh, we need a bracket here." Remember all the additional stuff we had to do with the police station after it was done?
Well, listen, I'm more worried about that there's two issues the contractor has that they could come back for this one.
What if more of that comes back? Then we're over that $50,000. What if we get some of that money back? He's already giving some back, right?
Yeah, he is.
So is that in this number?
So...
Well, I'm going to have to take that into consideration.
So can I make a motion that we ask if we can go off the band one more time?
But she needs it by the 30th. Today's the 26th. If she says no, then there's going to be next time.
You don't even have enough time to meet again before the 30th.
And if that's, if they can't go off the band, then we, we do the expected, expected number plus $50,000. 499 or 50?
There's going to be at least a dollar more that is going to be spent. I mean, it's...
Okay, so 50, right?
But that could be, but that could be...
So the option is, you want to go to band one more time and if that's not an option, then we're going to take the anticipated project costs with $50,000 over.
Correct. That's my motion.
Do we add to the motion that that $50,000 be put directly back towards the principal?
Well, it would have to.
Yeah.
Would have to be, okay.
But if $20,000 comes back for some projects, then we're over the, we're going to still borrow some money for the next 20 years.
Yes. Yep.
Hi. See, I can't, we can't ask the question, "Why can't we ban again?" Because we can't, that's what I want to know. I don't want to, but I, I know we can't do that because today's the 26th.
And we, there's not enough time to post a meeting and have a meeting before the, what's the 30th, Saturday?
Yep, Sunday.
So...
We can work, we can work this out.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second, so.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Meetings, invitations, and announcements, July 10th.
I'm sorry, can I just, I wanted to say this and I forgot to. We did also tell residents that we're going to do fundraising. So if some of this stuff needs to be done, like the walkway and some of these things that for a year, when we went to all these places, we said, "There's going to be a fundraising portion of this building." I mean, that could be the fundraising. This, these little things that we're, you know, "End the project if we have to and just move forward." But I know the votes already happened, but I just want to say that that's, you know, we did tell the people and there was absolutely no fundraising. So, that's fine.
Okay, meetings, invitations, and announcements, July 10th, 2019, 6:00 PM is the next meeting of the board. July 10th, 2019, 7:00 PM is a fifth meeting. Consider changing the August 7th meeting to August 14th or 21st, but there was an email that was circulated around that those dates are not going to work and Nancy had suggested August 1st. Does that work for the board?
That was, that was me better.
So we're going to have a meeting on Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday meeting, Thursday, August 1st.
August 1st.
7:00 PM.
So that's our August meeting?
Yes. And then we'll have another one later in August when something happens and we got to come back in. Future agenda items, selectmen's reports, anybody?
I just want to, when Nancy sent us, say that the Wall Street Bridge is supposed to be open Friday for traffic after, I think they're a little bit over on the days. I'm not sure.
They said mid-June initially.
Okay.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nancy, there's a plain paper one on the back of this?
That was just to attach it to it.
Is anything signed?
Everything is signed.